I'll ask the business manager to note the roll call and ask that everybody rise as we snow lead this in the pledge of allegiance. Flag is over here now.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We all look over there in the corner and find nothing because we're all used to the flag being in that same spot like it has been for years here. So, moving on to the adoption of the agenda, the most recent agenda is on the table in front of you. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second. There's a motion and a second to adopt the agenda. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed say no. That motion carries. Four dates to remember, January 11th is early release, January 16th Martin Luther King Day, there's no school, January 20th is the end of the first semester, January 21st is credit recovery day, January 23rd is the regular board of education meeting at 5:30 PM here in the instructional planning center in the arena, January 27th is the earliest date to begin circulating or to file a nominating petition for school board election, January 30th is the high school registration open house from 5:30 to 8:45, February 1st is early release, and February 13th is the board of education meeting at 5:30 PM. The remaining dates to remember are on the agenda. Our next item is community input for items not on the agenda. Anybody here for that? Seeing none, we'll move on to item seven, conflict disclosure and consideration of waivers. The school board will review the disclosures and determine if the transactions or the terms of the contracts are fair, reasonable, and not contrary to the public interest. We have one from Sherri Nelson, Director of Curriculum and Instruction. This is waiver WR 2017-47. Do we have any questions or anything we need to discuss regarding this? I'd move approval. There's a motion and a second to approve the waiver. This is for her participation in a conference that she's being asked to present at.
Correct. And most noted, she's taking 1.5 days vacation to do it, so it's simply following the disclosure law.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of finding that the contracts are fair, reasonable, and not contrary to the public interest, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed say no. That motion carries. We now move to the consent agenda. The superintendent of schools recommends approval of the following. A, approval and/or correction of minutes of previous meetings. B, consideration and approval of bills. C, approval and/or correction of the financial report. D, board approval of new hires. We have five new hires. Tyler Valeski as an assistant coach for seventh grade boys' basketball, Robert Brooks as a special education para educator at Buchanan, Tricia Johns also as a sped para at Buchanan, Kelly McFarland as a Title I para at Buchanan, and Gwendolyn Douglas as a food service substitute. We have no contracts for board approval. We have five resignations for board approval from Kathy Meyer, a kindergarten teacher at the K-1 Center. That'll be at the end of the year, am I correct? We also have two, we have one from Laura Peterson, high school choral director, and Larry Peterson, high school band director. Both of those are also resignations for the end of the school year. Nikki Mallon, who is a special education para in the SLC room, and Tim Headblum, assistant girls tennis coach. Then item G of the consent agenda is permission to bid for two yellow school buses to be delivered after July 1, 2017, and to be paid for with the 2017-2018 budget. H, to set the date for the combined city school election for April 11, 2017. Aye, to approve the combined election agreement with the City of Huron for the April 11, 2017 election. J, to renew arena advertising for 2017 for Domino's Pizza, Farmers Union Insurance, and Creative Printing. K, to enter into an advertising agreement with Ryan's Hanger Restaurant for the Huron Arena. And then L is an intent to apply for grant funding that has been submitted by Colleen Jensen for the middle school, after-school academic group. It's for a Walmart community grant in the amount of $1,000 to, I guess, looks to help support the Quiz Bowl team. So, as always, the consent agenda can be approved with one motion, or a member can pull out an item, have it placed in the business section, or can ask a question on an item.
Move to approve.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed say no. That motion is carried. We now turn it over to the superintendent to celebrate successes in the district.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. Congratulations go out to Amy and Joel Nelson. Amy's a sped para educator in the middle school for us. They're proud grandparents of a new granddaughter, Reagan Elizabeth Sibley, born December 12th to Matt and Hannah. Huron Middle School students, congratulations for qualifying for the regional spelling bee competition to be held in Mitchell on February 4. First place, as it has been the last couple of years, Aubrey Rutledge, an eighth grader, three-time champion at Huron Middle School. And runner-up is Tudu So, a seventh grader, and Mason Davis, a sixth grader. Congratulations to the All-State Orchestra students in our middle school. Will Smith is an eighth grade contra bass, contra bass rather, Anna Cruz is eighth grade cello, Ruth Troutman an eighth grade cello, and Maggie Knipling a seventh grade violin. Congratulations to two sets of parents whose children got married over the holiday break, Beth Foss and Gordon Foss, and Michelle Chase and Roger Chase on the marriage of their kids, John Foss and Lexi Chase on December 30. Congratulations to the middle school academic Quiz Bowl winners. Eighth grade was Heyse, Derek Simmonsma, and Matt Kretschmer. Seventh grade was Cooper Johnson, Tanner Cronin, Stephen DeGeese, and Landon Moore. Sixth grade was Mason Davis, Siki Manoki, Matlin Freiberger. The students will represent Huron Middle School at the Quiz Bowl meet in Pier. Thank yous go out to the Huron High School Madrigals who came to the Buchanan K-1 Center and performed for the kindergarten students, and thank you to Banner Engineering and Northwestern for donating many hats and gloves this season to the children at the Buchanan K-1. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. We now move to reports from the board. Our first is a report from the accounting firm ELO, and we have Jamie Eldine present who will present our 2015-2016 audit. Go to that mic there and make sure the button is out.
Button is out.
Little red button.
Red button there, yeah.
Looks like it's out.
No.
It's out.
All right.
Is that working? Hey, okay.
Yeah, they said okay.
I believe you've all been given copies of our financial statement audit. I just brought along a quick synopsis overview of the audit. First part there is just the auditors' reports, and there's kind of four sections to that. The first part would be the independent auditors' report on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance and other matters based on audit of financial statements performed in accordance with government auditing standards. And if you had the financial statements, you could see that report, but basically through that report, the results of our test disclosed no instances of non-compliance or other matters that are required to be reported under government auditing standards. The second part there would be the independent auditors' report on compliance for each major program and report on internal control over compliance required by the Uniform Guidance, which is your federal awards, and primarily on there, in our opinion, here in school district complied in all material respects with the types of compliance requirements that could have a direct and material effect on each of its major federal programs. Following that is a schedule of findings and question costs, and really there were no findings or material weakness or significant deficiencies noted. For the federal awards, we did look at two major programs, the special education cluster and the child nutrition cluster. And finally, letter D there is the independent auditors' report, and in our opinion, and that report states that, in our opinion, the financial statements present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the governmental activities, business-type activities, and each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information of the Huron School District. Along with that, there are some reports that are required supplementary information, which would include management's discussion analysis, the budgetary comparison schedules, and the schedule of funding progress, the schedule of proportionate share of the net pension liability, and the schedule of the school district's contributions. That information is required to be reported under governmental accounting standards. We applied certain limited procedures consisting of inquiries of management about the methods of preparing that information and comparing that information for consistency with the financial statements. Beyond that, in that report, we go on to discuss supplementary information, which consists of the schedule of expenditures of federal awards. These are not a required part of the basic financial statements, but they're presented for the purpose of additional analysis. That information would have been subjected to auditing procedures applied in the audit, and certain additional procedures, which would be comparing and reconciling that information to underlying accounting records or to the financial statements themselves. Beyond that, we get into kind of the actual financial statements of the school district. So, we looked at the statement in that position. The school district had two total assets of approximately, approximately 53.5 million at June 30th of 2016. This was a decrease of approximately $718,000 or 1.17%. Primary areas of decrease were the cash account was down 1.4 million, and the net pension asset was down 2.08 million, while capital assets would have increased by 2.63. The total liabilities and deferred inflows of the district were approximately 21.6 million, which was an increase of approximately $100,000 for the year. The school district's reports a net position of approximately $34.3 million, an increase of approximately 1.65 million, or 5.1% increase. The next government-wide financial statement there is the statement of activities. The school district reports total costs of 26.3 million for the year ended June 30th 2016, which was an increase of 1.29 million over the previous year, 5.2%. Program revenues were approximately 5.85 million, and those were used to finance the programs, resulting in net costs to the school district of about 20.4 million for its programs. General revenues of approximately 20.5 million were used to finance those, resulting in an increase in net assets of approximately 99,000. I believe that's my phone, so I apologize. And then we get into the fund financial statements. The general fund had total revenues of approximately 16.2 million for the year. That's an increase of approximately 687,000 or 4.4% from prior year. Total expenditures of the general fund were approximately 16.8 million for the year, and that's an increase of 1.1 million over the previous year. Overall, that results in a decrease in the fund balance of the general fund of about Other funds that would have been part of the report would have been the capital outlay fund, which reported a net increase in its fund balance of approximately 1.1 million. Special education fund reported a decrease in its fund balance of approximately 164,000. And the other aggregate governmental funds had a net decrease of approximately $954,000. That is a really quick overview, I know. If there are any questions, I'll gladly take them.
So, everything look good from your end?
There were no findings from an audit standpoint.
No other questions? Okay. We have this under new business to approve the report, so then under new business we'll officially approve the audit. So, thank you very much. Our next report to the board is from Paul Fierich from North Central Bus Sales. Presented to the board on the advantages of propane school buses.
Thank you and good evening. Hope everybody got to read the letter that Kathy put together. It did a very good job of explaining the, basically, the ins and outs of why propane is a good choice in fueling the buses. Makes me feel good that she's actually paid attention to some of the things I've told her. So, we'll get right into it. Why autogas? And when I say autogas, I'm talking about propane, but the technical term to refer to it in propane, or propane as a fuel, is autogas. And so, when I'm going through the slides, I'm going to go, kind of go back and forth between autogas and propane, but I'm going to try to say autogas all the time because that's, if it's a motor vehicle fuel, it's referred to as autogas. So, four key points that I want to cover is safety, deployments, the economics of it, and then the performance and reliability. So, autogas, it's a low operating pressure fuel compared to diesel engines nowadays. The pressure at the engine is anywhere from 100 pounds to 250 pounds, depending on the weather outside, the colder it is, the less pressure there is in the fuel system. Liquid propane is a, or autogas is a nontoxic, non-carcinogenic, non-corrosive, so it's a safer fuel. If you have spills, propane wants to be a vapor, and when you release the pressure, it becomes a vapor, so you don't have fuel spills to clean up on. The fuel tank systems are 20 times more puncture resistant than standard fuel tanks, so if there's an incident, the bottom picture is showing the Canadian Motor Vehicle Standards Test, which is a higher standard than the Federal Motor Vehicle Standards Test. So, we were tested to the Canadian Motor Vehicle Standards Test, and so that's a 4,000-pound sled that hit that bus at that prescribed angle at 40 miles an hour, and the result is after 30 minutes, there cannot be any leakage. In the federal motor vehicle side, they do allow some leakage, and so to sell a bus in North America, Bluebird has chosen to meet the Canadian Motor Vehicle Standards Test. And then the low flammability of the fuel, it takes a much warmer flame to ignite the fuel, and then the actual flammability range of the fuel is narrower. And basically, it's got to be the right mixture, whereas diesel and gas will always ignite, no matter what the ratio is. On a propane or autogas vehicle, it's got to be exact mixture. So, if there is a catastrophic event where propane is leaking out of the vehicle, it's a very narrow flammability range, so we're getting safe, we have a safer vehicle this way. Reliability, cold weather, autogas is suited for colder climates. Propane or autogas would like to be a liquid at negative 45 degrees, give or take. So, if it's a liquid already in the tank at 45 degrees below zero, there's virtually no pressure in the tank. And then to get the engine to run, there's two fuel pumps in the propane cylinder that would push propane to the engine, and the bus would run. Propane, we don't worry about it gelling up like we do in diesels, and then, so then if we don't have a bus on the side of the road that's having a fuel event, if we will, we don't have students waiting for a bus that is broke down, we don't have parents wondering where the bus is or why it isn't here yet, and Kathy isn't getting a phone call at 10:30 or 11 o'clock at night, hey, you know, we're ready to leave the basketball game, but the bus is gelled up, we can't get anywhere. So, some of the things. Deployments in North America since 2011, there has been 8,500 Bluebird buses put on the road. Buses are driven from the factory approximately 1,300 miles to Minnesota where we prep them and then deliver them to the respective customers. That 1,300 miles is relevant because this vehicle's running on propane or autogas, and so they're driving from Fort Valley, Georgia, which is approximately two hours south of Atlanta to Minnesota, and they've driven them as far as Denali National Park in Alaska. They're actually running some of these vehicles. A wide range of tank sizes. It depends on the length of the bus for the tank that you get, 47, 67, or 93 usable gallons, and I stress usable gallons, because when I'm selling a vehicle, I want Kathy to know that there is 93 usable gallons in there, and if you're comparing other vehicles from other vendors, to make sure that you're comparing the same usable gallons, because they're going to talk about water gallons. And currently, Bluebird is the only one with a 93-gallon usable tank. With 93 gallons, you're going to be able to go approximately 350 miles round trip. First Bluebird autogas bus was deployed in 2009. We used a GM engine that is not in production anymore. Just a quick synopsis of the last year. In 2016, Bluebird produced 2,240 buses. Only 100 of them went to national accounts, so basically your first students or Atlantic National accounts are considered anybody that's operating in five states with 500 buses. So, of that, 2,140 were sent out through the dealer network of Bluebird. That number represented 33% of the production that Bluebird did last year were autogas buses. How come they're clean? How come they're more reliable? 60% less NOx, 80% reduction in hydrocarbons, and then 100% reduction in the particulate matter. And basically, those are the fuel chains of diesel, gasoline, and propane. And the carbon is the problem that we are trying to get out of the diesel engines nowadays that's been mandated by the federal government, and that's what's giving everybody the fits in how reliable the vehicles are and how much it costs to get them repaired. So, in a diesel chain, there's 15; in a gasoline chain, there's eight; and in propane, there's three. So, it's just sheer numbers there that make this a cleaner burning vehicle. Let me make sure I'm getting everything. Yep. Autogas economics, so it's a stable fuel pricing. 90% of it is sourced from America, 7% comes from Canada. The remaining 3% is some that is shipped into Hawaii from overseas. It is not tied to the global, or it's tied to the global market, but it's not tied to the oil-producing countries in the Mideast, and so the volatility of oil does not translate to the volatility of propane as far as pricing goes. It's a much more stable graph. The bottom two lines represent that, whereas the top two lines- The bottom two lines represent that in that, whereas the top two lines are gas and diesel pricing. And then, average savings, this is, this is a number, basically, the deployments we've seen out in the field is anywhere from $3,000 to $4,000. Some do go as low as $500. Those are mainly the warmer states where they don't have to plug in buses. They don't have to chase and mix fuel. They don't have fuel events where the bus gels up and goes out of service while en route. And then, it's a domestic fuel, so you're supporting American fuel. Most of the fuel, you know, that is around here, you know, it's produced up in the Bakken. It's a byproduct of the fracking. The reliability of our product is, we are tied in with Ford and Roush. We're using a production line engine. It's a 6.8-liter engine and a Ford transmission. So, these are production engines that are going down the road. So, if you go buy a F-250, 350 with the V-10 engine in it, it is the same engine that is produced that, at the Ford Windsor, Ontario plant. When it's going down the line, we know, they know that it's going into a school bus and that we want a higher-capacity oil pump in it. And then, we're putting in hardened cylinders so that it runs on the autogas, because it is a more harsher fuel when it's going through the engine. And so, we just wanted to make the, make the haul. Starts in cold weather. The lowest point that it's been started is at a negative 48 degrees or something like that. They tried to start it the next morning, it was negative 55 below, the bus would not start. They found out the batteries were froze, and that's why it did not start. With the Ford power plant system and the transmission, we have a five-year unlimited mile warranty. If anything fails on the Ford power plant, we do have towing that would cover that to get it back to either your shop or to a facility that could repair it. Bus warms up quickly. We're running on a, it's similar to a gasoline engine. When you start it up, it warms up rather quickly. And then, we don't have the gelling, the after-treatment system that are on the diesels today that are causing the fits. And then, it's a liquid injection system. I wanted to cover that quick, because I have, I have some experience with propane back in the 80s. I drove school buses. And we were running them on propane back then, but it was an evaporation system. So, we're running on the gas in through the carburetor to get the engine to run. Now, it's a liquid injection system, so up, up to those blue fuel rails, it's liquid all the way up into there. And then, when it's injected into the cylinder, it becomes a gas and runs, similar to how gas and diesel run today. This is a quick, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on this one, it's a very busy slide, but these are basically the components of the diesel emission system. And it's just the sheer number of things that we've added to a school bus since 2010, or any diesel engine that's running out there that is causing issues with all the diesel power plants. The ease of operation, so we have an Otis, what we call, terminology, and I'll explain it here. So, we have an Otis system to start the bus. And we capitalize on the Ford One Touch Ignition System, Otis. And so, when you get into a Ford or any newer vehicles nowadays, you turn the key and the vehicle starts itself. And we are capitalizing on that with the Ford ignition system. And what happens is, you get in the bus, turn the key ahead, and in the display, it'll say "start in progress." And what we're doing at that point in time, the fuel pumps are starting in the bu- in the tank, and we're pushing liquid all the way up into the engine through the fuel rails. And then, on the fuel, on the return line, there's a sensor. And when it sees liquid there, it says, "Okay, engine, you can start." And then, to fuel the bus, it's not like fueling a 20-pound cylinder where you got, you can smell the gas and the guy's putting these gloves on and this mask on and all that. The buses nowadays are autogas. We have a Stably nozzle, that's the picture on the top. And it's basically like a hydraulic fitting. You basically plug it in, and when you squeeze the handle, it clamps on to the nozzle on the bus. If it does not see that positive lock, it will not dispense any fuel. So, you're getting rid of your, any chances of fueling or spilling the fuel. Another, another nice thing is lower noise level on and around the buses. It makes it a lot easier for the drivers to maintain control and hear what's going on in the bus and around the bus. And then, if, also, with the lower maintenance cost because of the propane system, it's just a lot more economical to operate. That is all I have. It's a very brief, quick orientation. I tried to cram about three hours into 10 minutes. I did, I first introduced this idea to Kathy about two years ago, and we've been talking about it ever since. And I'll solicit questions or listen or answer.
How widely available are facilities that can fuel these buses?
Any propane provider can fuel it, whether they will or not, that's another question. Back, I've been selling buses now for five years. I started out here in South Dakota. I'm based out of St. Cloud, Minnesota. And back when I started, I drove a bus from St. Cloud to Pierre. And I stopped in Brookings. I stopped in Pierre, stopped in Watertown, and made it home. I did call ahead to make sure I was going to a place that understood what I wanted. It's just a different way of thinking about it as far as getting fuel. If you get to a place, your team's going to Rapid City, say, and you know that they're gonna stay overnight at a hotel, a bobtail can come fill it up. Basically, what you get delivered to your house when they fill up the propane tank there, they can fill the bus as well. I know that North Star Energy has a fuel station here, Bodle, and mid Aberdeen. And if you go with them, they have a key fob system. So, you basically walk up to it, it reads the key fob, driver would enter in his ID and mileage, and at any of those locations, he could get fuel. It's readily available. I, I, three weeks ago, I did a ride-and-drive event over here, and I got fuel at the Flying J. I don't recommend it, because they think they're filling a 20-pound tank and they're charging you accordingly. Now, on my return trip, I stopped in Madison at the Senex on Highway 14 there. He had an autogas price, a buck forty-six, I think he was. I thought that was reasonable. It can be done. It takes a different way of thinking about it and a little homework at first.
Okay, thank you.
The cost savings, was that when gas prices came down last year, what, a year and a half ago? When they were up really high and they came down a good ways?
It definitely narrows the cost saving of it, but a lot of it is derived from your maintenance features. This is, this vehicle's only using eight quarts of oil, where your diesels are using anywhere from 25 to 30. This vehicle does not have a, an expensive after-treatment system for the exhaust, whereas the diesels do. If you're replacing, I'm gonna get real technical on you here, and I apologize and try to keep it as simple, but there's a particular filter on the exhaust stream in the, in the exhaust. If you need it cleaned, it's $3,000. If they can't get it cleaned, after they charge you the $3,000, they're gonna tell you, you need a new one for $6,000.
Is that on the diesel bus or the propane?
Yes, on the diesel, I'm sorry. On a propane, it's just like your car, you have a catalytic converter under your vehicle, right before the muffler. When's the last time you've had a problem with your catalytic converter?
We've had propane forklifts at where I work, ever since I started there, and it's been 39 years. And they've worked well. The reason we use those, of course, is because if you drive inside of the building than outside of the building, is you have much cleaner air for them. And of course, you're, you don't have the smell of the diesel or the gas burning. Just wondered, how does the forklift system that uses a regular propane tank that you change out compared to the bus? Is that still the liquid fuel injection, are they the same?
No, so on a pro- on a propane forklift, you're relying on the pressure in the cylinder and then evaporating the gas to run in like the old style. And on a bus, we have two fuel pumps in the tank that is pushing the liquid up to the engine. And the reason we have two fuel pumps is if, for some reason, one fails, you can drive, you can drive the bus back at a reduced power level, back to your garage or a maintenance facility. But you cannot compare how this vehicle, or how that forklift runs to how the bus runs or a propane engine nowadays. It's completely different systems. Actually, the propane forklift is the old system that they used back in the 80s. You're basically relying on the gas to evaporate and then run the engine.
And we've actually gotten along with those quite well. But the question I would have too would be the availability of the fuel. You know, I don't, I don't know how many, I mean, we, we didn't set up a filling station at our plant because of the safety and environmental and training and all the, all the things you had to maintain. So, we've used local contractors. Raymond Oil, I think it's been one we've used locally that refills our tanks for us. But, you know, being this is liquid, that would be the question. You need to know where those are and probably contract with them.
Yeah, so, when you feel, when that, that cylinder on the back of the forklift is a liquid, when you fill any cylinder, it's a liquid, and then you're just relying on it to evaporate. Anybody that sells propane has the ability to fill these, whether they understand it or not. Believe me, I've been doing this for five years. I've been driving a propane bus around. And you get this, you get this, these people sometimes that are just like, "Explain this to me." Because it's such a new thing to 'em. One comment I have to that additionally is, it's new to us. If you go, if you travel Europe at all and pay attention to the gas station signs out there, they have a unleaded price, they have a diesel price, and they have a propane bus, or a propane price. And we're behind as far as when it comes to utilizing the fuel that we have in this nation. In Europe, they have thousands of vehicles that are running around, running on propane. We are behind on this.
If you needed maintenance, where's the closest maintenance center for here?
So, a couple of things that we would do. I would either take Jared and Kathy to Roush in Livonia, Michigan, and have training done for them, or I would bring it here. Boyer Ford would be the best ideal situation in Sioux Falls. The local Ford shop here in town could do it, whether they want to or not. It basically comes down to the size of the vehicle, whether they can get it into their building to fix it. And Kathy and I have talked about this. If there's a, so, if I sell some here or in South Dakota, I have to go to the local Ford dealer. They have the first right of refusal to service this thing. And most of the time, they're like, "I ain't got a bay big enough for this." So, then I would approach, or approach Kathy or the local transportation person and say, "Where do you take your equipment, get fixed? Okay, I'll go over there." And I'll explain to 'em, basically like I'm doing now. And then, say, "I will get you education to work on these." These are really simple vehicles to run. It's, you can't compare it to diesels at all. You don't need a computer program. You basically need an OBD-2 reader, plug it in underneath, and you get what you need out of it. Any, any failures, or rather, simple failures, I can go back to that fuel rail. Each one of those fuel injectors is replaceable individually. And they, they, they are a quarter of the cost of a diesel injector. And you don't have to take the heads off or take all the emission stuff off the engine. I mean, they were right up there where you could see 'em. It's a simple O-ring. Take the electrical connection off. You pull 'em out, put the new one in, put the O-ring, the snap ring back on, plug 'em in, and you're ready to go. I took, Minneapolis Public Schools bought 14 of these this year. I took two of their mechanics to Livonia, Michigan. They were rather concerned about working on these things. It is, literally, it's only a six-hour class to understand the mechanics of this thing. At the end of the day, when they were done, they looked at me and said, "We need to get more of these." It is really that simple. And it's, to make things simpler, it goes against what has been happening over time. Everything seems to get more difficult, more difficult, more difficult. And here, we're going, we're gonna actually take a step backwards, and we're gonna make something easy to work on again. And Jared, Jared would be just as able to work on this as the Ford technician or any other technician.
And Ford would cover that type of service if it was outside the Ford dealership?
So, what we, what, what we request the customer to do is if there's a warranty issue, you contact North Central. We determine whose warranty it's covered under. So, there's Ford, there's Roush, and then there's Bluebird. And we all have the five-year unlimited mile warranty, but we're the point of contact. If it's a Ford issue, then Ford's gonna cover it. If it's a Roush issue, Roush will cover it. If it's a Bluebird issue, we have some wiring harnesses that we, we spec out and put on the bus. And then, so we would cover it.
Does Roush do the transmission, is that part of it?
No, so, the, how, what Roush does is they, they're the go-between, between Ford Motor Company and Bluebird. They get the engine from Ford and upfit it to run on propane. Ford, Roush is one of the few qualified vehicle manufacturers that Ford allows to go in to their engine control module and change some of the parameters so that it, the bus, or the engine realizes it's running on propane and not gas. There's, there's like three QVMs that are allowed to go into Ford's engine control module. We've been, we've sold propane back, autogas since 2008. We've had our first engine failure this year. That bus had 250,000 miles on it. And it was a local college that ran between St. John's, St. Joe, and St. Cloud. And in four years, they had 250,000 miles on this vehicle. They panicked, because they know what a diesel engine costs to replace. They were quite surprised when they found out how inexpensive it was to replace the propane engine. It was about half the cost.
Well, this concept intrigues me. And I just, as I was reading the literature that was provided to us, I was seeing warmer climates, and all of a sudden, Minnesota popped into the, into the passout that we had. Is there quite a few of these over in the state of Minnesota?
Approximately 450 of them. This map, I didn't talk a lot about it. So, but in this map, any of these colored states have propane in 'em. South Dakota, it's gray. There's no, none over here right now. You guys have the opportunity to be the first in the state to run 'em. You won't be the first to operate 'em. If you look at California and Texas, that's where these are big because of the emissions. And California Air Resource Board has basically made it illegal to sell a diesel bus in the state of California.
Yeah, a couple of the questions. I know on our propane forklifts, there's an exhaust monitor that you use when you bring those in to adjust the carburation and so forth. Does that work the same on this one?
Yep, yep.
And if that's how you get your levels of exhaust, tells you that it's burning clean?
Yep, exactly. So, yeah, we are utilizing the Ford emission system. And we're just telling it, it's running on propane, so we're looking for different, excuse me, items rather than gas. We're look, on gasoline, we're looking at propane stuff.
I'm also intrigued by the idea. The, the, the one thing I'd wanna understand, though, first is where we'd get propane, you know, who we'd use? Who are the local contractors that would provide and, you know, understand that part of it so we knew?
So, there's an-
Could they be able to provide it? How was, are they be able to provide it, what the cost would be?
So, I know in town, North Star Energy actually provides a 24/7 service. They have a fuel pump at their stage, or bulk plant out there. Basically, you walk up with that key fob, it reads it. It's very similar to like swiping a credit card. Driver enters in his ID, mileage, and you're dispensing fuel. That's the first step. If you, so Kathy's looking at two of these. If you do more in the future, it would be better for you to have your own fuel station so that you have it readily available all the time. And you get the benefit of buying the fuel a little cheaper. So, North Star's running a business, they're charging so much a gallon of fuel. Minneapolis, I know a lot about that one, I've done a lot with that customer. They put in a 18,000-gallon tank. They can drop one tanker there. And so, they're buying fuel at a tanker price, which is approximately 75 to 80 cents a gallon right now. Now, I'm kinda putting some words in Gary's mouth, and I don't like doing that, but you would have to work with your suppliers to find somebody that would wanna fuel your buses locally for the time being, or buy your own station, which is approximately 15,000 to 25,000 dollars, depending on what you want it to do. If you simply wanna pump with a manual gallon counter on it, you're gonna spend 15,000 to 20,000 dollars. If you want something that would tie into a fuel system, you're gonna spend closer to 25,000. a fuel system, you're gonna spend closer to 25,000 dollars.
Well, it would just seem like it would might make more logical sense if you bought one or two to start out buying the propane rather than, you know, seeing how it worked out before you-
Yeah. I know that, uh, North Star's very interested in supplying the district with fuel. Actually, um, I drove here, it was a Friday morning and we took the bus for a drive. Uh, Kathy, Jared, Rex, Kelly couldn't make it. Um, we went down to North Star, talked about how to fuel the bus up. Um, and, I mean, if you read Kathy's letter at all, she's very comfortable with how this would operate. I, I, I was amazed when I read the letter that she put in a lot of details and basically took a lot of my speaking points.
One more question. Do these buses achieve the same speeds as a diesel bus?
They are limited to, uh, 70 miles an hour. Um, on a diesel, we can go 75. Um, as of January 1st, they're going to increase it to 75 miles an hour. Um, they were, they were concerned with the drive line between the transmission and the rear end of the bus. And, uh, in the last five years, they've had no, no problems with that. And so now this year, they are allowing them to go 75 miles an hour.
Okay, thank you.
So, uh, the fuel price per mile between diesel and, and propane, is that, how is it comparable? Is that?
It's anywhere from 50 to 60 percent the cost, excuse me, of diesel fuel. You're, you're, you're paying less per gallon. Your fuel range, or, so if I go back to that carbon chain, carbon directly results in your fuel mileage. The less carbon, the less miles per gallon you're gonna get. But if you're saving 50 to 60 percent on your fuel price and then also saving on your maintenance and your preventative maintenance, it becomes economical. And that's, that's the drive between the 3 to 4,000 dollars. We did a, a total cost of ownership for Huron. Kelly has that. Um, we did it initially with showing that when you mix fuel for the coldest three months of the year, um, fuel comes out to be about 429. Um, and that's taking into account any chemical, any additives that are being put in. Jared's timed to do that and then mixing of the fuel. Um, Kelly had a question. So if it, we're paying 229 a gallon, what does that do to the TCO? It drops it down to a $500 savings. But that does not take into account all of the, um, maintenance items that are the big unknown in the diesels.
Now, so do propane buses then usually cost more then? What's, what's the average difference there?
Yes. Um, on average, with a 93 gallon tank, it is approximately $8,000 more. With, um, with the first TCO we did with the fuel prices and mixing of it, you're going to save, I believe it was about 3,400 bucks a year. So within two, two and a half years, you're gonna recoup your cost of investment. And then depending on how long you run them, you're gonna put that money back into your budget per se and back into the classroom.
What's the actual difference on miles per gallon on, on diesel bus versus a propane? What, are they like semis?
So on a diesel bus, it's, it's, it's very, on a diesel, it's very computer controlled. You know, the driver push, mashes the pedal to the floor. The bus is only gonna go so fast. On a propane, it's like driving your car. If you mash it to the floor and it's an icy road, you're going to spin the wheels. So what we do is we, we, we coach the drivers to drive it like their vehicles. And on a diesel bus, um, Kathy has averages that are anywhere from six to seven. Um, seeing that, I'm gonna say that you're gonna see three to four miles per gallon on an auto gas vehicle.
And does temperature play an effect on that at all?
No. It, it burns the same way.
I guess another question I have to be more for Kelly or maybe for Rex. Of all of our buses, do any of the yellows actually go out on activity trips? Like how many of those of our fleet you think would be out cruising around across the state versus those, I mean, the big activity buses are the ones that are taking majority of the kids?
We have four yellow buses currently that we use as activity buses for, um, sub varsity activities. And then we have the three white coach buses that we take for varsity activities.
Other questions? Well, uh, I guess I'll, I'll also ask, so we, the consent agenda, we approved permission to bid for two yellow school buses. Is it the intent that that bid is gonna be for propane buses or is that gonna be for diesel buses?
I have that. I had a pro, for discussion in the business manager report.
Okay.
So we can talk about it now or then.
Well, I think now's a good time since we're on the subject.
What the business manager report says is, uh, we intend to buy two buses, but maybe we should bid for diesel and bid for propane so that we can see the cost difference. And then at the next meeting, you could decide which one you wanted to go with.
Okay. Sounds good. Any further questions then on this topic? Okay. Well, thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, before we move on, I was gonna ask, Mr. Eldine, are you waiting around for us to approve that audit? Or you're just, you're just hanging out, listening? Okay, good. I was gonna jump down to that if you were just waiting for us. So, okay. You're welcome to stay and watch the whole meeting if you want to. Uh, our next item is the good news report, uh, on special education from Lori Wielander and Kelly Roder.
Hello again. Um, about a year ago, about this time, I came to asking to approve a new position for an academic evaluator, uh, somebody that would go around the district doing all our evals with the school psychs. And we hired Kelly Roder for that position and it was a new position. So I brought her here tonight to just tell you how our year is going and how the program's working. And so I'm just gonna turn it over to Kelly and let her speak.
You gotta get behind the mic. Oh, excuse me. Um, most of you, um, know me. Uh, this is my 32nd year in our district. And when the position, um, was advertised last, um, winter, I thought to myself, oh, I wish that would, uh, come about next year when I was, would be ready to retire. And one of the administrators said, well, why, why are you waiting? You can do that now. And I thought, I don't, I don't know why I was waiting. And so I applied for the position, um, very anxiously, I think a day before the deadline. And, um, and it, it really is a combination of all of the things that I have, um, wanted to do. I graduated with a special ed degree, um, a double major. And then I, um, was contemplating going back to USD for, um, and go into psych, like psychometry, psychometry, educational testing. But the campus was too far away, so I went to SDSU, um, and got a master's degree in curriculum and in administration. So it felt like I was putting all of these things together. Um, I met with the school psychologists and Lori and learned more about the position. And when they offered it, of course, anytime there's a new opportunity to learn, I'm excited. Um, the job in itself has been, um, challenging, learning, uh, new, uh, testing assessments. Um, I enjoy working with Melissa Krogman and Kathleen Wilson, our school psychologists. Um, it's very much a team effort. Um, we are housed in the same building, in the same classroom. And so if they have questions that have to do with a classroom setting or teaching or interventions or strategies, then I feel like I have something I can contribute. And in retrospect, if I have a question about assessments and Ross scores and standard scores and, you know, do we use percentile ranking, what's the best, then they're able to teach me as well. So it's very much, um, a team effort. Um, while I was sitting there, I looked at this, I kept looking at this sign and I thought, educational excellence for every child. I always felt that that was what I was responsible for as a classroom teacher. And yet in this new position, I feel that that is even more so important because with special services, we provide that opportunity for educational excellence for all students. And so in assessing either an initial referral or a three-year eval, I feel like my job needs to be fair and consistent in my administration and interpretation of the results so that every student gets a fair shake at obtaining that excellence in education. And what special services can do to provide that is bonus for that child. Um, every day, it's a new day. I might work with a five-year-old and then go across town and test a 21-year-old. Um, I've been in every building from our home to James Valley, Buchanan, all of them except Holy Trinity. I have yet to travel in, in their school. But, um, at the high school, establishing that rapport with kids before I start giving in an, an assessment, um, I think that's something that I do well. Um, I've made great friends in, uh, in Sam Reek's program that I now get invited for lunch. And I told them to make sure they told their teacher to make cookies, cut out Christmas cookies. And so when they did, I got invited for cookies. And it's just, like, I still have that opportunity to interact and engage with kids, which I would miss if I, if I didn't do that. Um, I tend to ramble. I don't know. I love my job. There's no way that I'm going to even contemplate retirement. I told the eighth grade girls volleyball team, I'm gonna stay until they at least graduate and then we'll see from there. Um, I love it and I, I'm done. I don't know. If you have questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. But like I said, the little people and then I go to the big people. I don't, I don't favor one any more than the other. I just was testing a little five-year-old and he was kinda doing a little dance out the door and a little another dance out the door. And I said, no, no, honey, listen, listen, just listen real carefully. Ready? And he all of a sudden stopped and he looked at me and he took his glasses. He went like this. You wear glasses too? Yes, I do. Now let's try that question again. So whatever works. And they make me smile. The one thing that I am really impressed with though, and I would not have had this opportunity without having this job, is students that I've had in the classroom, years past, I now have just had an overwhelming number that I go, oh yeah, I had them too in fourth grade or fifth grade. And now I'm reevaluating and their three-year assessments are up. And I can honestly say to them, I am so proud of you. You have come such a ways since fourth or fifth grade. I mean, it's just amazing what they've done with special services. It's boosted their confidence. They've learned strategies. They've just blossomed. And so, makes me cry. I'm so proud of them. That's it. Now I'm done.
Any questions?
My, my question would be for Lori, cause what Kelly said is well documented. The, Lori, the goals behind, uh, Mrs. Roder providing that service was to free your teachers up. So can you talk to me about what has happened along that line? Because that's, that's what the investment is for.
Yeah. One of the goals when we talked about this job was that we had so many teachers that took, were taken away from the classroom and away from their service time with kids to do assessments and do assessing for special ed. And we were hiring subs and all these different things. So that's why we hired this new position. So I'll let Kelly talk about how that's working out.
Well, I just took account today. I've tested, completely tested and written reports for 77 students. And I have six on the docket for this week. So they, I found out the very first week that just says in the classroom, you don't ever get caught up. You just keep working. And so the, um, teachers that I've closely worked with, they have written favorable comments and they've spoken to me and have said, we appreciate you so much, what you can accomplish. And like if it's a high school student, it's gonna take me two visits. A 90-minute block of time is not a ti, enough time. It takes me about two to three hours to complete an evaluation with the, the assessment tool that we use. And so imagine a classroom teacher trying to pull two and a half hours here and there to get, to be able to assess a student with no inter, you know, interruptions, in a quiet setting, have time to establish that rapport, you know, it, it, it would be difficult. And so I do hear, I didn't, I didn't send out a formal survey. I thought about doing that, but it's still relatively fresh. You know, the only, um, the only reluctance or hesitation I've heard from the classroom teacher, the, the case manager, the special ed teacher, is that when they are not doing the assessments, they're not certain, um, where their deficiencies are or where their strengths or their weaknesses are, that, um, they liked doing it themselves. But on the other hand, as soon as I'm done assessing, I write a very complete detailed report so that they know I need to follow up and give a skill-based test, say in reading apprehension. They'll do a little bit more because based on my assessment, that might have been an area of concern. And so, you know, they liked having it in their hands because they had immediate feedback. But as long as I'm quick on the return, which I am, then it's good. And then with the psychologists, they have commented that they like having one evaluator. It just provides that consistency because right now, if I have a child who's reserving special services in first grade, when they move to second grade, that's gonna be a different teacher. And when they go to third grade, and it could, it may be a different teacher. And in fourth grade, and each of those teachers are gonna evaluate maybe differently. There are some subtests where it's, it is, um, the scorer's responsibility to interpret it. So if I interpret it one way and you interpret it, even though the guidelines are right there, we may do it differently. And that, for that reason, I met with, there is another person that has a job like mine. And she works for the co-op.
Mid, mid-century.
Mid, I can't, I'm, I cannot think of her name. But anyway, early on, I met with her after I practiced and administered some of the testing and we met together. And I said, okay, if I, if you have this, what do you do? And we went through a lot of those scenarios and we interpret the same. So I feel like if one person is doing it, it provides consistent results from year to year. Another reason why I'm not retiring. So, I don't know. If that answered your, I don't know. Did that answer your question?
I'm, I'm, I'm back to the, I'm back to the dollars and cents side a little bit.
Okay.
Have we seen a reduction in substitutes? Have we seen a, a visible measurable reduction in substitutes, teaching children because the teachers are not teaching them instead of subs? Because that's what motivated the superintendent, so.
Yes. I have not, um, had any requests for substitute to do assessments this year except for in speech, which has, they have to do their own.
Right, okay.
So, yep.
Okay.
So I still have a job?
Yes.
So do I still have a job?
It was never in question.
Then I would have to bring up my education.
Yep. You're done. I was just gonna, um, tell about one other thing with special ed here. It's gone on the last month. I was just gonna, um, tell about one other thing with special ed here that's gone on the last month. Um, we have to submit our child count, and it's a count of how many students we serve on December first. And this year, our child count, when we submitted it, we have four hundred and eleven students in ages, um, it'd be ages four or three to twenty-one that we are serving in special ed. And then we have about twenty-five to thirty birth-to-three students, so...
How's that compared to last year?
Last year, when we submitted, we had three hundred and, I can't remember, I'll get that, but it's three hundred and sixty-five, I think, right in there.
Anything else?
Nope.
Any questions? Any questions? Well, thank you for the report, and, uh, thank you, Mrs. Roder, for your dedication. She's out there. Thank you for your dedication to the students. I appreciate that. Okay, uh, that is it for the good news report. We move on to our next report from the calendar committee. Uh, just for, uh, everybody's knowledge, the calendar committee is a committee put together by the superintendent, and it reports to him, uh, to help put together the school calendar. Uh, and he has asked, uh, Jen Bragg, a parent representative on the committee, to present its, uh, recommendation to the board.
Okay, I was just making sure everybody up there got a copy. I got a couple extra ones, if any of the people want to look at it. Um, we met last week, and we once again adopted the starting after Labor Day and trying to end before Memorial Day calendar. Um, getting in those hundred and seventy-four student contact days, hundred and eighty total teacher days, gave us a few days to play with. Um, some of the things to note, October ninth, we have Native American Day, obviously. Um, Veterans Day in November next year falls on a Saturday. So much like New Year's this year, where we have the observed day, where banks are closed and postal service is closed, and we still had school. We decided to do that again next year. So we will have school the tenth of November, according to this calendar, if it's approved, and the thirteenth of November. Um, and instead opted to take the full Wednesday before Thanksgiving off, giving us a five-day break in November. Um, December Christmas break again will be like this year, where we have the full week and then one extra day. Um, January fifteenth for Martin Luther King Day, nineteenth of February for President's Day. We took that sixteenth of March, um, as a spring break day. It will be called. It is the day of the basketball tournaments. So there were some, um, staff requests for days off, and we decided to give them that. Um, Easter falling on the last weekend in March gives us a nice four-day break to sandwich between March and April. And then we opted to go all the way to Memorial Day weekend, with our snow days falling the first week in June. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
Just one question. If, if we were to have a snow day that we needed to make up, would there be a possibility of using one of the other days that we used?
We opted not to do that, um, partially because it's confusing to parents. If you're already planning something that weekend, and then, oh, wait, is there school, is there not school? Um, with some issues with communication and translation and stuff, it might be hard to expect your students to come on a day that had been set off. So we decided to do after Memorial Day, that first week in June. But snow days were very heavily discussed at our meeting.
How about going back to school on January second? When we're one of the only schools that do it?
We talked about that, because this year, we went, and there was nothing else going. You know, the, everybody else was closed, because it was an observed holiday. We kinda felt like next year, it won't be as big of a deal, because those places will have, banks will be open and all of that. So it, it won't be as noticeable. We will notice it in November. I was on the calendar committee last year, and people knowing that, that was one thing that I got bothered about a little bit. Um, why are my kids going to school when I don't have to go to work, or whatever? Um, but it was kinda nice. This year, we took that twenty-third of December off, so that we had a little bit longer Christmas break. And then the teachers really wanted, um, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving off, to be able to have that extra time to prepare themselves for the holiday and to travel. Because a lot of people were saying that students might be leaving anyway, to go to travel when Thanksgiving's on Thursday, so...
Any pushback on graduation, Memorial Day weekend?
There wasn't at this meeting.
How much discussion was there about the start date?
Not as much as last year.
Labor Day or after Labor Day?
There was, that, we took a vote, but last year, it was pretty split, fifty-fifty, with starting after Labor Day winning by, I think, one vote. But this year, it wasn't as, that wasn't as divisive.
This'll be, what, the third year, third or fourth? This calendar, this is the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen calendar, will be the fourth year now in a row?
The proposal will be the fourth, I think. Because the experiment started when we accommodated the construction deadlines. Jen, you've done a great job. I'm gonna answer the one question that did not come up. From everything we've looked at, uh, because I might be the only person who likes Memorial Day graduation less than you do. It's a casualty of starting on Labor Day. It's absolutely a, uh, a casualty of the calendar. And, uh, the, the tough part about it is that for the folks that work, volunteer, et cetera, most of us give up the Labor Day weekend in order to support the state fair and be volunteers, et cetera. So two of the three summer getaways are, are kind of locked in by what we do. But there's give and take in everything, and, uh, in order to make the schedule fit after Labor Day, it's, it's, there's too many days of school to have it earlier, and there's not enough of an appetite to move it to the first weekend in June, so...
Well, going to this after Labor Day makes school start with purpose and meaning. Going for a day and a half, uh, fluff time, so we could take off for the fair was just... From an educational standpoint, it made no sense.
I agree. And I think a lot of the people on the committee agree, too.
And then the other thing, because it was smooth, but Jen promised to be my eyewitness, that the first thing I did was call for community testimony, as we had advertised at two board meetings, and there was none. So just wanted to clarify.
The only evidence, I, I liked the calendar overall. I like, you know, I, I think starting after Labor Day fits well with the Huron community overall. That'd be the only thing I would wonder about, is whether we should take, oh, like, the Monday after Easter as a potential snow day, so that we wouldn't have to go into that next week after Memorial Day. But that would be my only question in the calendar, that I see that if you had that one snow day in there somewhere, that might be more palatable than going that following week.
One of the dates proposed, we had about three different days that we could look at, and said, "We need to go to school on one of them." And one of the days was the twenty-fifth of May. So the option was there, that if we went to school on either the twenty-second of November or the sixteenth of March, we could take one day at the end of the year, and it could kinda be a built-in snow day, where you know you're gonna have to take it, because we live in South Dakota. Let's face it. So that wa- but I think, um, I think some of the general consensus was, we're probably gonna have more than one anyway. So if we have to go back for one day afterwards, for two days, for three days, let's take one of those break days in the middle of the year, where students are antsy and teachers are wanting an extra day to prepare.
Thank you.
Karen, when there was a time when the calendar had a lot more space in it, because of starting on the third, third Thursday of, uh, of August, which got us done by Christmas, that with the basketball breaks, et cetera, we would try to put those as dates that could disappear. Um, once all of those have been removed, the, Jen, you tell me if I'm seeing it different, but the, um, people are pretty protective of the dates that they have in there in scheduling travel, whether it's staff scheduling travel or parents scheduling travel. And so, when we went around the room and looked at building them in, the, the committee, I think in, in almost unanimous consensus, wanted them at the end, because it's such a condensed calendar, where we spent years previously that the calendar was pretty open, and we actually had some days in there that we noted before it started would go away. So I've lived under both moons, and Jen, is that an adequate description? Because it was talked about.
Yep. And I think the teachers, knowing that their students know they have to be there that day, was important, too. Um, knowing that there wasn't going to be a confusion about, is there, isn't there? There wasn't gonna be a translation issue, there wasn't gonna be a, well, we planned a trip, so we're not gonna be there. I think the teachers needing to know for their own personal schedule, but then also needing to know that all of their students knew that it was a day you should be there, was important to them, too.
Well, I think, too, when we had, when we started before Labor Day, there was a lot more red blocks on this.
Correct.
Because we were taking a lot of extra days every month, um, than, than aren't there now. You know, the, the first three weeks of January being part of the first half of the year, I mean, that, um, that's... We've given up some credit recovery issues with that, but, you know, that's the only right way to do it, is to continue that. Don't come out of Christmas break and boom, hit everybody with, with testing.
Okay, any more questions? Well, thank you very much for the report.
This is how it's introduced, so that you folks have the right to community feedback, and then we'll ask you to act on the proposal at the next meeting.
Okay, our next item is a report on powerlifting from Michael Schmitz.
Well, thank you for letting me come and address, uh, the school board as a, this matter. Last year, we had kinda taken a group, a hodgepodge group, to the state powerlifting competition. Um, it did quite well, uh, with the kids that we had. They had really pushed and needed somebody to kinda help guide them at the end. So I had volunteered my time and, and went with them to do that. Upon returning, um, we had quite an interest in starting a club sport, doing this. Um, and I was kind of amazed when we, when we originated with this concept this year, getting it started. We had approximately, like, our numbers in the morning, um, our morning lifting was about ten kids. We had about four in the afternoon. Once we started this kinda generalized lifting in the afternoon, uh, we're at about ten-plus kids in the afternoon, are still ten in the morning. Uh, and these are kids that are typically, um, they're not in a sport at the moment. Um, whether they were in a fall sport and are in a spring sport, or they're a one-sport athlete that's just looking for something to do. Um, but the number that kinda staggered me a little bit was, was we have four, five, six kids that don't participate in any athletics in Huron, that just wanted to be a part of a team. And they were afforded this, this opportunity, they're, they're able to compete, be a part of a team, be coached, um, and be around other kids that, that they haven't done before. I don't think I've ever, I've asked, I've talked to them frequently, and they haven't been a part of an athletic sport, been a part of necessarily a, um, a school team of any, and of, of any sort. And they're taking and stepping out and being a part of that team. Um, and that's kinda what we're looking for. We're looking for the fitness aspect, yes, and to teach them how to do things long-term. Uh, with the coaches that I've talked to, you know, they, there's some that have participated themselves for thirty, forty years, um, in the sport of powerlifting themselves. Um, so it's a, it's something that can transcend just school and keep them learning, but it also gets them involved to be a part of the school system a little bit more, um, to encourage them to step out of their comfort zone. Um, we have about thirteen boys and two girls that are, that are the inaugural part of this class, which is big for me. I wanted to make sure it included everybody, whether it was boys, girls, um, people that are in athletics, not in athletics, just to give them a platform to be successful and to, to do something new. And it, it also goes right along with the fact that, you know, with our, our new equipment in the weight room, um, being utilized as much as possible, not only during school, but, but after-school hours, getting, uh, the use that we can out of it. Because it's a gorgeous facility, and it continues to get better and, and gives those kids an opportunity. Um, and that's kinda just what I wanted to kinda introduce to the board right away, was, is just the opportunities that are afforded because of the sport of powerlifting. It's not just something where kids go and, and try to do something singular-focused. Um, it's, it's a greater picture, um, and you can see it through the schools that, that have a, a long history. You know, the, the O'Gorman's, the Madison's, the Bran Valley is now really taken to a, an account. They're host, hosting a meet this Saturday. Um, and it's, they're, they're creating a new culture for their kids, and that's important to me. Are there any questions? I've kinda talked quickly, I know I do.
So, powerlifting is now a club sport?
Yes.
At the high school?
Yeah. So there's not really any affiliation with the school necessarily. Um, we, we have our own transportation. We have, you know, we foot our own, um, entrance, entrance costs and things like that. But just to be able to kind of say that we're part of the school was important to me, and, and to contact, uh, Mr. Ragkey and, and Mr. Roder, to, to at least be allowed to say that we're from Huron was, was big to me. And a lot of the kids just wanted to be a part of something, so...
In terms of finances, it's more like the hockey team or the soccer was before it became a school sport?
Yeah, it doesn't cost the school anything, just the, the ability to, to use the weight room, um, certain hours. And so that's kinda nice. I, uh, I do get some coaching for the weight room, but typically I do that, um, kinda encompassed together. Um, we've been fortunate that I can coach, uh, a lot of the kids that are, whether they're football, basketball, what have you, um, in the weight room. At the same time, I can bring in these, these kids that still have the ability to lift after school, but now they're in there because they have a purpose.
Any other questions?
Um, I would just like to emphasize, I have talked, um, to a lot of the kids who do do the powerlifting after school, a lot of whom who have not done any sports, who are not in any activities currently. And I would like to emphasize that they do love having something to do, and they do really love the coaches. I've been hearing about that for the past week or so now, so I would just like to, great job.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Anything else? Being none, thank you mu- thank you very much for the report.
Thank you.
Thanks, Coach Schmidt. I believe that, uh, is a trust and agency account a part of this yet or not? That hasn't been a request. Okay, all right.
Okay, we now turn to the business manager's report.
Okay, tonight I just had a couple items in the report. First, financially, we are halfway through the fiscal year already. We've collected seven million, eight hundred and five thousand dollars, which is about forty-three percent of our budgeted revenue. Last year at this time, we'd collected seven million and sixty-seven thousand dollars, or forty-five percent, for the same period last year. In the general fund so far this year, we've spent seven million, two hundred and twenty-six thousand, thirty-nine percent of the budget. Last year at this point, we had spent seven million, nine hundred thousand, or forty-eight percent of the, that budget. But you know, we're doing the teacher salaries a little bit different this year, and they won't all show up till we get to the end of the fiscal year. So to try and track it a little bit, to make sure we're on track, I did take a look back at the prior month, and we have just spent eight percent more, which is on track, because a hundred percent divided by twelve months is eight point three-three per month. So we're spending about eight percent per month this year. We've already touched on most of this, about the school bus bid. We plan to bid for our diesel and propane, and then we'll see what our cost difference is. I'll get that stuff out of the business office tomorrow and get it advertised. We should be able to consider those bids at the next meeting on January twenty-third. And either way, the buses would be paid for with, uh, next year's capital outlay budget, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. I also wanted to say that, uh, you heard an in-depth report tonight about Bluebirds buses and Bluebirds technology. There's, we typically, as you know, have three bidders. Paul agreed to come and speak and talk about propane, which is great. But, um, you know, some of the details that he touched on may be different with the other manufacturers. The manufacturers being the International IC, which comes from Harlow's and Webster. And then there's the Freightliner bus with the Thomas body that comes through Formans and Miller. I would anticipate all three will probably be bidders on diesel and propane. And that's my report.
Any questions for the business manager? Seeing none, thank you for the report. And we now turn to the superintendent's report.
Mine will be fairly brief. Now, we've got some new business I'd spend more of my time on a little bit later. But the legislative session, um, is underway, and I appreciate the communication that you've had with our legislators. And in, in all of the, uh, work that we've done leading up to it, I think it's going to be a year that... And in, in all of the work that we've done leading up to it, I think it's going to be a year that marks showing appreciation and support for the work that was done last year in order to put us in the position that we've been in to be more competitive with putting together a teaching staff for the students in South Dakota. There could be some issues that come up that call for us to, to go up there and testify, and I'll try to keep you informed on that. And I'll try to work closely with different board members, which is actually you'll be doing down below. Obviously, Garrett's already done quite a bit of work with the SASD through the delegate assembly, and Tim will be doing work through the LAN network. And so we'll try to keep everybody informed, but where education was centerpiece, I think there's other things that are going to occupy the legislature, and we need to be there to support what we have. I've been in communication, including with the executive branch, on long-range adjustments on the capital outlay. But I'm, I'm leaning towards leaving those for another day in another year, because I think that they're very, very interested in letting the system work a year without any adjustments. And right now, we're solid where we are. Those are some long-range things we've talked about adjusting in the future. That's what I have on the legislative that I just wanted to comment on. And then, starting next week is our first meeting. I think we're coming up on the junior first grade program, pilot program. And this is something that Mrs. Hines and I have been visiting about since last summer. And I'm very happy with the, the progress that's been made to get to a, a point where we're now putting together a committee and, and start seriously looking at what a junior first grade program would look like. And I would just like to explain that we have had several students who were not ready at the end of first grade to go to second grade. And so they were retained. And I believe that there is a better approach to doing that, and we're doing the work right now, that all children would come in as kindergartners, and they go through the kindergarten year. And then those that are ready for first grade and projected to be ready at the end of first grade to go into second grade, they would be in a traditional first grade. But by putting a junior first grade program in, we would be promoting every student, those who aren't quite ready for the first grade curriculum, certainly do not need to go back to the first day of kindergarten and relearn all of those social skill developments, but can be identified in the areas that they need the most help in order to be academically ready. And then we're looking at a situation, and you'll get a report at the board as the committee goes along. But in my vision for this, we would be looking at a situation that during that year of junior first grade, if they suddenly had a, a maturity boost, and they were ready to go, and as I visited with Mrs. Nelson, we're working on identifiable skills. And so suddenly, if they had developed those identifiable skills in that first semester of first grade, they may be a candidate to still join regular first grade and be back on track for second grade. It also would allow us to fall back in the fall of first grade, that if all of a sudden we've got a student who is struggling, they don't have to go back to kindergarten, they can go to that junior first grade, and we can identify their specific skills. So right now, we have children who have a three-year K-one experience, but it's kindergarten, first grade, and retention. And I think this is a much, much better program. I do not project it being a cost, because all the children have to be with the teacher anyway, it's just identifying what the teachers would do with them. And the staff that is working on this, and, and it'll be identified later, I just wanted the board on the front to know what's going on. The staff that are working on this, one has experience as a junior kindergarten teacher, when we piloted that before the enrollment surge. One was in the first grade classroom for a year and is now in a second, or was in a kindergarten classroom for a year and is now in a second grade classroom for a year. So we've got some people who've really spent, some classroom teachers who've really spent time looking at children in the K-one, and how do they develop and when do they develop? And so I'm, I'm pretty excited about, about bringing to the board a, a recommendation later on about a junior first grade, and we're just starting the meetings. And so I, I wanted to introduce the concept to you this evening and answer any early questions before the committee starts working on it.
Just a question on, on whether this program has been used on the schools around the state, you know, if, if we have some information, how it's worked out?
I don't have definites as to how far on the front edge we'd be, okay, with the, with the program. There've been a lot of junior kindergartens, okay, but identifying it as a junior first grade, we may be the first, and it might be, because all of our K-ones are in the same building. Pretty, it, it's a bit more difficult to have a junior first grade program if you, if you have three or four around the state. I, I don't know that, and Sherry, if you've got a better answer to help me out, okay, we're, we're probably pretty much on the front edge of this.
I was wondering if there was some research out there where maybe it's been used not in South Dakota, but other places around the country where there's been some benefit, you know, that has shown to be effective?
Anything yet? Okay.
Thank you.
I've come across way more junior kindergarten concepts than junior first grade, so. Thank you.
Any, any questions for our superintendent? Seeing none, that completes the reports to the board. There's no old business, so moving into new business. First item is selection of the Legislative Action Network representative. Been Mr. Ben Burcom in the past, I guess you're going to do it again?
I would be willing to do it again. I've done it, I think, every year except one, one year. John did it that year, and I'd be willing to do it again, so.
I did it so poorly, Tim took it over the next year. I appointed him to take it over the next year.
You did a fine job, John.
Well, then if there's no objection, oh.
No, I, I just got to say I would make that in the form of a motion. I think Tim's done a good job in that past year.
It's up to you.
Well, we can do a motion in a second, just to make it formal. As a motion in a second to appoint Tim as the Legislative Action Network representative. Any more discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no, that motion carries.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Garrett, second here. Okay. Then, we are now on to the audit. New business item B is approval of the twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen audit that was presented earlier. Is there any discussion or action on the audit?
I would move approval.
I would second that.
Motion in a second to approve the audit, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And if opposed say no, that motion carries. Then we have the annual governing board review questionnaires for our tax advantaged bonds and our tax exempt bonds. Can we just adopt, these, these come up every year, since we have bonds issued, do we need any particular discussion, or do we just need to approve what's been presented?
I have prefilled the same answers that you've used the last several years. I guess the one comment I would have is probably be the last year for tax advantaged bonds. Those were the Build America Bonds that we used on the high school remodel, and when we issued the capital outlay certificates to do the last sports improvement project, those bonds were all paid off. So while we're continuing disclosure and post issuance compliance, should be done with them after this year.
Moved to approve. Second. A motion and a second to approve both the tax advantaged bond post issuance compliance and the tax exempt bond post issuance compliance. Is any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed say no, that motion carries. Next item is tax increment financing. Right now, Mr. Bishop and Mr. Ben Burcom have been representatives on that committee, and I think there's just a question of whether they need to be reappointed. And so just to.
Continue their work.
Continue their work on that committee, since that has been used recently. So unless there's any objection, we're going to reappoint those two individuals.
I would just say that on December twenty-second, we had a recent meeting. It was in regards to Dakota provisions, expansion out in the West Industrial Park. And the TIF committee did pass a recommendation to approve it and send it to the planning commission. And we're planning to, I didn't bring my agenda, I, is it sometime January or February?
The twelfth, I believe, for January.
Twelfth of January is when we're meeting again.
It's a good program, I'm glad we're able to utilize that in our community.
I think it protects them to reflect in the minutes that they're still representing.
Yeah, I think it, I think it'd be better just to have a motion, to have more action on that. It's because they are making the decisions that.
Can the motion reflect the time period that this appointment is for?
What do you recommend?
For life. I just want to put it in the minutes.
I'd make a motion to appoint Garrett and Tim to the TIF to represent us, school district, for a period until one year from now.
How, how about, can we extend it through the next term, to the next annual, so now?
So we'd start through, through June thirtieth of eighteen.
Of eighteen.
Second then.
June thirtieth of eighteen.
Yep.
Okay. So this motion by Mr. Halcat and a second by Mr. Hader to do, do that exactly, to reappoint that, to reappoint Mr. Bishop and Mr. Ben Burcom until June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed say no, that motion carries.
Maybe something you want to add to the annual meeting is to appoint that for next year.
It's not a bad idea.
July of eighteen.
For the twenty eighteen meeting.
Okay. Next is item E, signing bonuses for teacher recruitment. The superintendent is seeking permission to advertise and offer signing bonuses. There's a sample policy along with the state law on the issue in our packet.
If you, if you look at the sample policy, I've actually worked that through with Rodney Freeman, and also I've been in communication with the HEA representatives. I'm going to go back and forth between the two. Codified law makes it very clear in thirteen forty-three sixty-one and thirteen forty-three sixty-two that the school districts have the authority to pay, as it says in the laws, signing bonuses, moving expenses, or tuition reimbursement to a teacher employed. And then it says in the, in the follow-up, a one lump sum at the end of the first year, or in installments over a period not to exceed three years. That's what the legislature did in the law to give us a provision. And in, HEA, in visiting with them, recognizes that the law was put in place to not be a part of the negotiations process, but a vehicle that the districts would have in order to recruit teachers. And that's why it has a sunset time that it can be involved, so that it does not mess up negotiations in the long-term work of, of the teachers and their contracts. You will see when I went through the policy with Mr. Freeman, that we put a line through moving expenses and tuition reimbursement, so that as I introduce a policy to you this evening, we want to focus on signing bonus. And so we took out the moving expense or tuition reimbursement line, and we took out the school board may, but not required to negotiate any signing bonus, moving expense, or tuition reimbursement with the teachers designated collective bargaining representatives, because we're not going to do that. The way that this would lay out, if you are comfortable having us try to do this, we've obviously got some issues. We've got an immediate issue that we have a special education opening in the high school that's been there now for two years, going on the third, this fall. So, right, since you left, we have now been able to, to fill your behavior position in the time that you've been up here. So that would be one that the superintendent would believe we have immediate criteria to try to put a signing bonus on. The others, which, when you heard how many applicants we've had, even with inquiries, but we've got the district's library position, now we've got high school band, high school choir. I am not ready today to determine whether we would advertise for signing bonuses for them or not, because if we can get credible candidates without them, then, then there's no need to do that. But if we get a month down the road and we're not getting the feedback that we want in those areas, then I would like the latitude to be able to do it. The way I see it happening would be a, a signing bonus somewhere between zero and five thousand dollars. The three thousand dollar figure is probably the one that, that would work in some situations, I'm not sure that'll work in sped. And then what we would do is, that signing bonus would have to be justified, and the board would have to approve, specifically approve that contract and that signing bonus. It can't just be run through. So I would have to be in communication with the board, so that when you came to formal action on that contract, you were eyes wide open as to what the superintendent was doing as far as offering a signing bonus. And then, as we work through this in the coming weeks, because next time would be first reading on a policy, and then the following time approval, if, if you're ready to go there. But I see it as four installments. I would see any signing bonus that a fourth of it would be with their very first paycheck when they got here, so that it's a signing bonus. And then a fourth of it would become at the last payment of their first year, last payment of their second year, and last payment of their third year. So there'd be four installments, because that's how far the law will let you go. None of that puts you higher up on a pay scale. You're, you're on the same pay scale as everyone else, but you receive that signing bonus. When the board came up with the concept and used signing bonuses for the bus drivers, it completely turned that situation around. And so, you know, we want to look at that. If you're, if you're comfortable working through that process, I would ask for specific permission to advertise for a signing bonus on that special ed job. And then you can decide how much latitude you want me to have while you're considering policy. But we've got some, we've got some jobs open that make me quite nervous as far as getting applicants. So I, I yield to you for feedback and thoughts moving forward on, on this issue.
One question before we move forward. So GCD, this policy is something you are introducing today to start on the policy adoption process?
That's right.
And so, and then separately, you're asking for permission today to use a signing bonus?
Well, I can help you, I, I shouldn't have interrupted. But today I would seek permission to advertise for a signing bonus on special education, and I'm telling you, I don't need to seek your permission for two more weeks on the others. I haven't done enough analysis on the others. But while we're developing policy, I would seek permission to advertise for a signing bonus on that special education. Kelly, is there another one coming up that I need within two weeks?
Speech pathologists are the ones we're having trouble with.
That's the two areas, high school sped and SLP for speech language pathology.
Okay, and because Lori didn't have a microphone on, she echoed, echoed the sped at the high school and the behavior and the speech pathology. And those are the two that have been looking for a long time that I'd need specific permission to move forward tomorrow morning with signing bonuses in our advertising. Right? Did I do okay?
Question that, question that I got. You envisioned four payments. When I first read this, my, my concern was, you know, are we going to hold that contract to some period of time in order to get this bonus? And you've explained that. So I'm wondering if we need to strike lump, one lump sum out of, out of our, this policy and just say, in installments over a period not to exceed three years, because if you decided to make that payment one at a time.
Right, I, because I don't favor one lump sum, that's a good catch, John.
Where was that at?
It's in the second to last paragraph, unless it's two different places. But it says the signing bonus may be paid in either one lump sum upon completion of the first year, or in installments over a period not to exceed three years. And John's exactly right with what I've described. It could say the signing bonus may be paid in installments over a period not to exceed three years.
Exactly.
Good catch. Very good catch.
You know, like I said, one of the caution I would have on that is that if we're going to adopt this as policy, as a future superintendent, at some point maybe want to relook how they're addressing market needs, if they want to do a lump sum first year.
I think the policy would, this policy would allow it. It just says, it says in installments over a period not to include, so if you make one installment.
I, I think the board, I think the board, superintendent, business manager would have that latitude.
I'm just fearful that if we go to a lump sum policy, and we pay someone out five grand, and at the end of that year, they decide, I'm out of here.
No, I, I agree, I'm not favoring a lump sum, I just don't want to tie a future board.
So, so by understanding our, so by understanding our policy is incremental, not to exceed three years. I mean, it's pretty clear.
You have some latitude then, depending on the situation. You have some latitude then, depending on the situation. You would have some latitude depending on the situation. One other question I would have is, I know when I read the codified law, it says by both parties, paying a signing bonus, moving expenses, or tuition reimbursement. I realize we're trying to focus on the signing bonus, but is there a reason we don't wanna have moving expenses or tuition reimbursement in there? I mean, would there be a situation in the future where that might be the appropriate avenue in order to recruit somebody?
I'm open to leaving those words in there if that would be the board's desire. I would also say that because it's in the codified law, even this superintendent could come back in a different situation and ask you to modify policy to reflect that. I, I, Kerwin, I was just thinking about staying pretty controlled while we determined whether it worked, but, but the law and the sample policy are both there. It's just when we, when I met with, with Rodney, that's, that's what we talked about. Now, now I'm gonna talk in circles, you guys are doing a good job of stretching me. And I could see where the, where the tuition reimbursement might be an enticement if we had someone who'd come, but they needed to be qualified in something they're not qualified in, but, but we could also use a bonus to do that.
I'm, I'm kinda in the same direction that Kerwin is, that we, you can call it whatever you want to, we're giving them money. And the statute allows us to include moving expenses or tuition reimbursement, which are, I guess theoretically more defined as to what their actual expenses are. And by removing them from our policy, I mean, our board is kinda saying, we don't want to do that. We are restricting ourselves more than what state law allows.
Kelly, do you have any insight on this? Okay.
I would open it up and have all three in there to reflect the law. This policy came from associated school boards.
Right.
As their sample policy.
The only thing I see is, somebody might come to us and say, I want a signing bonus, and I want moving expenses, and I want tuition reimbursement.
I was just gonna add, you're getting a signing bonus, you can use it to pay for whatever you want, whether you wanna pay for moving, say, I'm taking my money, pay for moving expenses, I'm paying for tuition, whatever.
I'm, I'm open to whatever guidance, because this is an introduction, and so we'll, we'll write it in whatever way you all feel. I, I heard a consensus to take out the lump sum, because we don't want people to come and go, right? I heard that as a consensus? And I hear a friendly, two sides on the other, so.
I'm comfortable putting moving expenses and, and tuition reimbursement in.
Leave it in, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Very good.
So, again, this is just introductions that will be on for first reading and second reading in the future.
Right, and anything I need before the first and second reading, I'll be asking for a specific permission. So I'm asking tonight for specific permission on the two special education jobs that Mrs. Waylander described.
I would move approval.
I'd second that.
So that's approval on those two.
Those two.
Just those two requests, okay. Do you have that down?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And there's a motion and a second?
Yes.
Okay. To approve those two specific requests immediately. Any further discussion on that?
Just a question. Do you have a dollar amount in mind as to what you're thinking?
I have a, a self-imposed cap, and the, the, as far as advertising, I can tell you, it won't be above 5,000. So whether it be three or 5,000, but if we're gonna advertise it, and it's been open that long, I, I, I would guess that, I don't know, Mrs. Waylander, you're gonna be requesting different than that? Okay.
Thank you.
I would like to think 3,000 would be the norm on some, but in this special ed area, we're on our third year.
And we've got no applicants yet, so.
Right. So.
Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor say aye.
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 And opposed say no. That motion carries. And then our last item of business is policy GDBA dash three, on support staff hiring schedules for paraeducators. This is an introduction to a proposed policy revision.
Okay, and if you pull that up on your screen, and go to the top of that page, okay, you'll see a chart at the top of the page. This is a classified chart for hiring paraeducators, and this is the chart that is your approval from last June, with the exception of the column that I've added for tonight's discussion called licensed, SLPA slash PTA slash OTA. The rest of it is already in place, the rest of it, the rest of your paraeducators are already on the other schedules, okay? Then in the descriptions below the chart, you will see licensed, SLPA slash PTA slash OTA, and those stand for, Lori, help me?
Speech-language pathologist assistant.
Okay, and I'm doing it for the microphone. Speech-language pathologist assistant.
Physical therapist assistant.
Physical therapist assistant.
Occupational.
And occupational therapist assistant. And then the definition, one who assists licensed therapists with treatment plans in educational settings. And they're licensed, and you can see the dollar figure that we're looking at, and this is because of an analysis that's been done by Mrs. Waylander and Mr. Christopherson as to a potential for us to get people interested in working for us on that schedule, which would be a long-range savings over the current practice of us not being able to get people to work directly for us, and our fallback when people will not work directly for us is to contract for services. My close, Kelly, are you comfortable with that description?
If I remember right, the contract for service, I don't remember what the hourly rate was, but it seems like it was in that $60-an-hour range, is that?
Uh, for assistance, it's 45.
45, okay.
And so that, that's the recommended amount, to see if there's takers at that amount. And it will affect one person who currently works for us and has worked for us, rather than leave to work for a provider. So it would affect one person's wages immediately, correct?
And this, this is just first reading, right?
I'm so sorry?
First reading, this is first reading.
Okay, so once again, this would be introduction, and then we'll go first reading and second reading. However, I am, the superintendent is seeking permission to advertise for these positions immediately while we work through the process of, of making this longstanding, rather than the temporary permission to allow Mrs. Waylander to move forward on this.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to give the superintendent that latitude.
I would second that.
There's a motion, a second, to allow the superintendent to basically implement the revised policy immediately while it continues to go through the adoption process. Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed say no. That motion carries. There's no further business, correct? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed say no. That motion carries, we are adjourned.